Well, I would like to welcome everyone here. I'm Councilor the Chair of Community Resources. If we can mute everyone, sorry. And I'd like to call to order the Community Resources meeting of August 21st, 2023. Laura, roll call please.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
And Counselor Maori.
Here.
All right. Just to let everyone know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. And with that being said, moving along, we are going to move to public comment. If there's any public who wants to make a comment, now is your time. You can raise your hand, turn on your camera. I'll recognize you. I don't see anyone from the public here. No, one once, going twice. All right. That moves us to the next item, which is the minutes of our previous meeting. Thank you, Laura, for putting these forward. I have to say again, it was nice to look over them and see some of our work. There's a lot of information in there. So that was great. But I would accept a motion to accept these.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, Laura, roll call. Oh, you're muted.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. And that moves us to the next item, which is updates and announcements from committee members. Do we have any?
I have something.
Counselor Elkins.
When we get to announcements in the next council meeting and we want to say something about this meeting, I want to make the announcement so that I can be the one to say that we literally heard about the state of Northampton Farms from somebody in a tractor. That's my announcement. I want, I call dibs.
All right.
That is, that is allowable. Well, I'll make an announcement. I think that through the hard work of Counselor Elkins, that we're going to have our initial meeting for the Select Committee to study racialized harms this coming Thursday. So thank you for that, Counselor Elkins, and Laura, for your hard work too.
I think we have to round one last corner and get it posted. But yes, I think, I guess we can, as long as we confirm a form, that's correct.
And now, if no further announcements or updates from you guys, let's move to the, to the meat of this meeting. And we are so lucky to have some of the members of Agricultural Commission here to just give a brief update on the state of Northampton Farms. So I would like to turn it over to whoever wants to represent or speak first.
John is our chairman, so if maybe appropriate.
Well, I mean, I live out in the western section, so I'm up in gravel. So the rain has actually been sort of beneficial for me as opposed to last year when it didn't. Chip, you're down in a meadow, so you're the ones that really got hammered.
Yep.
So I mean, I don't go down there because I don't own land there, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so we're we're down in the Northampton Meadows below the airport and below 91. And you know, it doesn't make any difference whether you're, you know, a community garden or a big, bigger farm. There's been a lot of water damage for a lot of people this year. And our, our own outfit, we, we probably lost 80 acres of corn and about 10 acres of oats. And the, some of the potato outfits and other corn growers lost even more acreage than that. But uh, but I say it doesn't make any difference whether you're big, small, or medium. There's been tremendous water damage this year.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Chip?
Yeah.
Um. Could I, could I just add to that, Chip?
This, this is Richard Jasky.
Yeah, that was another member.
Another member.
I I also own land down in the meadows and I lost, I didn't, I don't have the acreage that the big growers have. But I did lose about three and a half acres of hay out of a, a, a big parcel that I don't even know if I can harvest it because of the pathogens from the river, from the sewage treatment plants above our, our land. Um, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to make a point. Um, and, and this is something that we've been dealing with in this commission for a long time. And this is the stormwater management fee. Uh, why would you institute a fee? Uh, especially to people farming in the meadows when, as you've just heard, Chip and Parsons Farm, and I think Goulet Allard Farm, Swazowski Potato Farm, plus other farmers down there that have lost, just lost a lot of money. They've lost their fertilizer. They've lost their machine time. They've lost their labor. And just plain, you know, taken a pretty good beating. Why would you put a fee? In other words, they, they've got nothing to harvest. And then there, here's your stormwater management fee, uh, which you're going to pay. They've already sacrificed. They've lost everything that they, you know, they haven't lost everything, but they've lost a substantial part of what they planted. And, um, and then they have to pay a fee on top of it all. I, I, I think we were recommended to, uh, to meet with you people on this Zoom link to make a point about this. It's a $15 million loss up and down the valley here for farmers who don't need any more low interest loans. They just simply need, uh, money to, to function. And, um, and also I, I want to be honest, the, the fee is not a huge amount of money. But in all essence, it's just plain wrong. Uh, why would you do this, you know, to somebody who's vulnerable, uh, as it is? Plus, they grow our food. Really, that's the point I want to make. And I, I, I'd like you to think about that.
Sorry, I didn't catch the, the name of, of who was speaking.
Richard Jasky, J A E S as in Steve, C as in Charles, K E. But I'm Vice Chair, John's Chair, I'm Vice Chair.
Richard, okay. Hi, Richard. This is Marissa Elkins. Counselor at large.
And you know something, Marissa, I'm on the seat of a tractor up here on Bottoms Road in, uh, in the Bay State section of Northampton. So there you go. How's that?
Two, two reporting live from tractors. Excellent.
His tractors are bored mines of John Deere. Yeah. Just not that it makes any difference.
Uh, I, I'm sure it makes a huge difference. I just don't know what it, what difference it makes. I'm not the one who knows. Um, I, I would like to ask a question, Richard, or anybody who can ask this. Um, has, has, have, have there been any discussions with the mayor's office about relief from the fee being maybe part of the response? Has that been broached at all? Or is this just sort of generally talked about?
We're going to be meeting with the mayor, uh, September 12th. We have informally, and, and I, and I think probably more our fault that we've informally asked the mayor to come to a meeting, uh, Mayor Narcoitz before, uh, before Mayor Skiera. Um, and haven't really pursued it, but we certainly are because, um, I, I think it's a matter of, of morals. The purpose of our Agricultural Commission is to support and promote agriculture in the city of Northampton. Why would you have a fee on vulnerable land? Uh, if you support agriculture, you know? And again, I mean, I, I, it, it, in all honesty, it's not a huge amount of money, but it, it's just the fact of the matter. And again, we'll, we'll make this point with the mayor. But, uh, uh, I know you're the Resources Committee. I assume that, uh, part of your job is to determine, uh, what resources the city needs to function. This being one of them, the stormwater fee. But, um, I know Charlie Zasinski in particular lost a big chunk of corn. And I think he grows 80 acres of corn, maybe 100, but he lost a hu- a huge amount down there. And there's no getting it back.
Okay. Um, I have another question just to follow up to anybody who can answer. Um, I, I was at the tour of the Farms Grow Food North Hampton. When Joe Comaford and Representative from the, I forget the name of the department at state level, the agricultural, um, response, um, down there, have, is there anybody who can report on anything that's beginning to come in in terms of resources and response to the losses from the floods? From the state level or, or federal either to anything?
I don't, I think there's money, whatever the 20 million the state has out there. And then I think they haven't figured out quite yet how they're going to proceed with applications, I guess. If, if, that whole thing, I think still needs to be figured out. And then the Resiliency Fund, they're having a meeting tonight at, uh, I can't remember, a brewery somewhere. And I think some of the, um, uh, politicians are going to be there and, and, and I, I don't think they are sure how they're going to disperse money also. So, um, the, uh, the Grenspoon Fund, which is a of, a fund that, uh, farmers can apply to small grants uh, during the year. They, they had their own money and they, they took applications and they, they awarded, you know, small amounts very, very quickly. I mean, they, they, they did a lot in a short time, but I don't, I don't know. You know, if, if, uh, there's, there's still plenty of people, like I say, big and small that need, you know, some, some help. And, and we don't want to pit size against each other either because, uh, the, the smaller gardens and, and those things are very important to people. So like I say, it's not, not, size doesn't matter in, in this deal. So that's my two cents. I, I think what, what, what's going to be necessary is come winter time. I mean, a lot of these, my wife runs a farm stand up on Bridge Road and, um, right now, um, she can't find any peppers, any, uh, uh, cucumbers. The corn situation is, is pretty much exhausted. A lot of your squashes uh, that a lot of these farmers rely on in the wintertime for peeling and then selling wholesale. Um, they could be non-existent. Uh, so it's going to be the wintertime and, and also starting next spring when they need seed money to get going again, that is really going to make the difference. And, um, you know, I, I think like Chip says, it's, it's probably going to take a little time to sort all this out. Uh, but these guys are hurting and they are really hurting. Uh, they're, they're hurting real good, you know? It's not a, not a fun thing here.
I, I had a question about, um, you'd mentioned trouble with contaminants. Uh, when, when
Right.
Uh, I know you, you obviously don't know every farm, but what is going to be the impact for, for farms like that? Uh, will that land be usable in the future? Or do you? I, I'm very curious what the process is and how we deal with, um, mitigating that.
I would refer that, I, I can add to that, but I think Chip would, uh, would be able to, I think, wouldn't you, Chip? Do you, do you have a little more info on that?
Yeah, but probably not the best answers either. I, I mean, I think that if there were any crops that had contaminant on it, you know, now they're obviously not going to harvest them and get them into the food chain. And then, uh, probably most of them, the land would be all right. You know, next planting season, I mean, they'll probably put a cover crop on and, and then plow that under in the spring and, and whatnot. But, uh, if, even stuff, you know, if you had water on it and the, the product looked all right, most, you know, people are not not getting that into the food chain. They're, they're, they've, they've lost that. So, but there's, there may be a better procedure than what I know also.
What, what I, what I've heard too, Chip, is, um, maybe just a little more detail, if I'm not mistaken here, what they, what happens is the, uh, as the storms hit up north, they over, overwhelm the sewage treatment plant and they had a discharge into the river. Of course, the contaminants are, you know, pretty volatile. And, uh, the, even though like Chip said, your, your plant might not have been underwater, if that plant ingests any of that water into itself, then, you know, eventually in the case of corn, um, it'll go up into the, possibly going up to the kernel. So you're, if you're a dairy farm or anything like it, and you, and you feed your animals that product, that animal, of course, produces milk. And of course, it, uh, eventually ends up in our food chain. So, um, I guess there is a test they can do, I, I've heard initially. And then they can test it 10 days later. And if it does test, uh, negative, then they can harvest. Um, I, Chip, have you heard of that?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think you're right, Rich. I, I haven't, you know, I haven't seen it. Or I don't know anybody that exactly had it done, but I'm, I believe I've heard that before too. So, so.
I mean, on, on the other side of the river, the Barstow Farm, one of the biggest dairy farms in the area, I mean, they lost, I'm pretty sure without a doubt that they lost a huge amount of their corn because it's right down by the river. Uh, especially on the South Hadley, at Route 47 South, uh, on the Hadley, uh, side of the river. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that they're going to be trying to figure a way to feed their animals. And of course, it's costly because then you have to buy, buy in product. Uh, and the margins in, in any kind of farming today are so slim. Um, that, um, you know, it really makes it, uh, pretty difficult. You know?
Yeah. And it, I mean, it, it's a local problem and a regional problem, of course, because it ran all the way up into Vermont and, 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 you know, from there down our way. So it, it, it's not, not only our area, it's a real regional type uh, problem up and down the Connecticut River Valley. So.
And I, I know. Sorry, I mean to interrupt. Uh, so, and Richard, so you were specifically mentioning, do you know, is, is most of the corn grown locally? Feed corn or for retail sale?
Well, there, there's a lot of it for, well, don't forget, there's, there's two types of corn. There's a corn you'd harvest uh, as silage, um, which you'd feed your cows in, in a supplementary fashion. You, you'd make a, uh, I forget what they call it, total digestible nutrients, T D N. They have mixer wagons and they big feed in so much silage and so much, uh, supplements, whether it be, uh, oh God, I don't know, Chip, you, you might know, uh, an example, but, um, you know, that, that would be more for a dairy farm. Then you've got your people that harvest like Chip and Parsons Farm, they harvest the cob and they go for the shell corn, which is a great feed for their operation, which is, uh, you know, small animals and such. Um, and then you've got your sweet corn growers and the sweet corn, corn growers that really devastated, especially in the Aquavita area in Hadley. And, uh, even in the Northampton Meadows, I think Carl Swazowski, uh, isn't that right, Chip? Doesn't he grow?
Yeah. Yeah, right. So, yeah, they, yeah, they have a bunch right down here near where I, where I'm sitting on the tractor and they, they lost some due to the water. So.
Yeah. And, and, and it's not the fact that he was near the river. And, and, and it's not the fact that uh, there's any pathogens. It's just that the plant becomes, can't, the roots can't get any oxygen because there's so much water. If you look, if you look down on the rainbow section where I've got land, the potatoes got completely swamped. They, I don't believe they, they got flooded. Uh, some of them did, but of course, what happens to the formation of that potato? Well, that potato is, is pretty done, you know?
They, yeah, they lost beyond, beyond you, Rich. They, they lost over 100 acres. They, they harrowed it up already. They, they can't, they can't tou- touch it. So.
You know, it's you're, you're a big fertilizer company like Nutrien Ag up in South Deerfield and your, and your seed suppliers. I mean, they've got their money, they're paid, they're all set. But the guys, you know, you, you put your, you put everything out in front, you put everything out there. You're not hiding everything. It's right out, open. You know, I mean, your whole, your whole life, everything you've got is out there. And you're just praying to God that most nature will work with you.
Yeah. And I, 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 I have to get off, but I mean, I don't think anybody's looking for, for pity or anything. We're just trying to point out some of the seriousness of, you know, what has overtaken the area this year and, 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 you know, just so people can be a little better on, informed on what's going on. That's all. So.
Um, I, I'm, I'm with you, Chip. I, I've got to probably, I've got to get down to the meadows and tend some hay, uh, myself. And, um, the, the thrust of what we wanted to say is, um, is this, is the, is the state of what we know of. Uh, we're not, you know, we're not on the, on the national level like, uh, Representative McGovern or Warren or Markey, but we're, we're local. And, uh, these, these guys have got hurt and hurt really bad because it hit at the wrong time. And, um, you know, again, that, that, this, this fee that these guys are getting, um, it's really not a, not a real pleasant thing, you know? At all.
Sure.
You know.
I wanted to speak to that right before, just before you leave, just to make sure because, you know, Counselor Moulton and I met with you. Yeah. I think it was last year and we talked about bringing the stormwater fee up to council. And I think you heard this, but just, just so you know, when we talked to the mayor, the mayor with, uh, said that they were, you know, they were just about to start this kind of basically an equity study about stormwater fees. And so we've been waiting to get that back. And we've, of course, as counselors, will have a lot of pointed questions about, about farms. And especially in the new light of, of what's happened. So that's what I wanted you just to, to be reassured that we are going to be, we're waiting for that to come to the council to have a conversation with that data in front of us. But we have not forgotten. And thank you so much for joining us. I wish it was under better circumstances.
The thing, one last, one last thing here that we are a commission that advises you guys, City Council and the mayor. And our purpose is to support and promote agriculture. Like I said before, we have been pounding our head against the wall about this thing for pretty much nine years. Trying to do it in a very nice way, but also trying to get you guys to understand the way we see it. So please listen to us and really do some thinking about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank, thank, yeah, thank you for hearing our two cents.
No, of course, we're, we're very grateful for the, the, the time, uh, when you're obviously very, very busy. I, I would also just add one more thing too. I, I'm very interested and I know, I think, speak for all the counselors on this committee and also generally, we're all going to be very interested to hear. I, I want to understand if, if, if communication is going well from the state and federal sources that are, as they begin to respond to this. Um, I, I know they responded to come see and started talking about things right afterwards, but I, I'm, I'm wa- I really, I really want, feel free, please let us know if communication's not going well, if you're not getting clear information about, um, what resources are going to be available and that that's what you're hearing from other folks. I mean, we, the council, um, you know, we can only do so much, but we also have relationships with our, you know, legislator, legislators and, and within things we're interested and, and want to help if there is a way that we can, um, as, as this, these relief measures and responses, um, get rolling. So, so not at all, you should not at all feel like anything other than you're, we absolutely want to hear what you have to say and, and your two cents and how things are going.
I, I, I have sent an email to Jim McGovern. He, he sent an email to probably everybody about this, uh, farm situation, what's happened. And one of the things that I said, and I, I hope I didn't overstep my bounds, but I said, the city of Northampton should need, need some help on the stormwater management thing. I mean, this is, this is mandated by the feds. This, this isn't mandated by the city of Northampton. And he needs to step up to the plate on this to help the city. You know, I mean, that's part of his purvey, I think. And, um, uh, I, I'd like to see the city council address him about this, you know?
Yeah. Will you, will you log me out so I don't say something I'm not supposed to?
You may say whatever you wish. No.
No, that, thank you. I am, I'm going to try and get off now.
Thank you.
Bye, bye.
Bye.
Yeah, log to and thank you very much for listening to us. We really appreciate it. And if we can be of help, you know how to get ahold of us. Thank you very much.
You, Counselor Jarrett, that's all you hear.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely want to second what Counselor Elkin said, that we want to hear from you all. Um, and thinking about the, the stormwater fee, you know, one of the, the requirements of a fee is that you receive something in return for it, uh, as opposed to a tax where you don't have to receive something. And, um, you know, there have been some, some legal cases, uh, about fees that I think that we, we need to, as we ta- look at this in a new light, um, we'll have to consider, uh, consider that. Um, and I think that the D B W and the mayor will be looking at that as well.
I think we're losing our farmers.
Yeah, I'm not sure they heard my comments, but.
They're, they're working hard. Uh, yeah.
John.
Yeah.
Well, I'm still here, but, uh, I mean, I was hanging this afternoon. It turns out my allergies turned out to be positive COVID test. So I don't know how long I'm staying here. So it's a good thing this is a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm totally different from the rest of the farmers because they're down in the meadows, which is, you know, some of the best land in in the country. And, you know, I'm out near West Hampton where basically one of our best crops are rocks and stones. So, I mean, I basically grow hay and, you know, my son and his friend are growing small amounts of vegetables and different things and experimenting in that regard. But I mean, last year was a, a bigger detriment to me than, than this year because, I mean, with the dry weather, nothing happened. So I mean, I really don't, you know, the, these people hit in the meadows, they own the land down there. My philosophy is I don't want people walking on my property. So I don't go down there just to poke around and, and their land. So unfortunately, a lot of people don't care about that and they just go driving around there everywhere. So because that was always a, a contention with us was the public's use or abuse of the, the meadows. I mean, we've met with the police and everybody else. So, you know, now, now the weather's going at them besides all the people. So.
Well, I, I live right down the street from the meadows. My house literally leads into the meadows. And I've seen, uh, many a folk driving, uh, down for recreational purposes, not farming. So.
I remember when we started the ag commission, I said, I don't even know what this is like. So my wife and I went down there in the winter and drove through and said, well, you know, this is what it is. But other than that, you know, I figured it's their farmland and.
Well, I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank
All right.
for hearing your stories and, and I, I would honestly hope that we could do this more often in this community. Maybe, um, just for check in and, and to make sure.
And, and not just because of dire needs, just for communication purposes.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Counselor Garrett.
Yeah, we just asked, uh, Tom as the staff person to be, uh, Agriculture Commission, if he had any comments. Um, or ways that we could, you know, that we could stay connected. Um, yeah. Better between the ag commission and the council.
Well, Rachel and Stan came to a meeting last fall. Um, and I think it was Rachel's idea that there be an, at least one annual kind of state of the Northampton Farm or some sort of presentation to council so that you all would be aware of just how the season was going. What are the challenges? What are the successes? This has been a brutal year. Um, and, and so I just want to thank Rachel and Stan for that idea. Um, and one of the things that may have gotten missed in the stormwater, um, discussion was, you know, many members of AGCOM have said several times, like, we don't mind paying the fee that other people and other businesses pay, but because our business is land intensive. And be, and one of the things that seems to And be, and one of the things that seems to, um, upset them the most is a, is say a barn or some large agricultural structure that drains onto farmland. So it does not drain onto a driveway that then goes into the road and then goes into the storm system. But when those are assessed at the higher rate, um, for the storm water fee, I think that upsets a lot of them. And some of them have farms where road water drains onto their farm. And so they feel like the farms themselves provide storm water services. And, you know, if they have a barn right by the road, then yeah, assess it with the storm water fee, that makes sense. But if it's, if it's back from the, from the road, um, the way many of them are and it drains onto farmland that then does not drain into the road system, they, they feel like they would have liked, um, you know, that assessment cut. Um, and so I just wanted to add that. And I, and they're aware that with the Coca-Cola leaving town, that it's, it's tough. It's, there's no easy decisions. There's a lot of money lost there. And so, um, they're not, you know, unaware of that fact.
Thank you.
I don't know if that made sense, but, you know.
Rachel.
Thanks a lot for that, Tom, and I, I found it really engaging. And I, I hope to encourage, you know, the new counselors in January to, to do, uh, to come to a meeting. It just, just to be familiar with it. And so that would be part, part of the boot camp we're designing for them. But I was just going to add, yeah, I mean, that's the thing about the storm water. I mean, what I hear and what we, Council Molt and I heard last year, it's like, really is like the principle of not feeling supported in that way. And it'll be a really engaging conversation because, um, my residents on Sylvester Road, who aren't necessarily farmers, although there are farmers, I mean, they, they don't like the fee because they feel like they're, they're, they have a lot of acreage. And it's like they're filtering water for the city. So that's an interesting perspective. Their land is actually kind of doing a service. So, I mean, certainly the fee is not sensitive to these things. And so I think that's going to be a, a real unpacking. And it's actually going to be, I think it's going to end up being a rather technical conversation about like how storm water gets. Cause I hadn't thought of people with a lot of acreage with a lot of like rocks and, you know, that they're actually filtering water. So, um, so I think that the, the plan should be when we're, you know, we'll get an update from the mayor about that study. And then we'll let you know, Tom, and, you know, when it's, when it's going to come up, that conversation's going to come up so that the ag commission doesn't feel left out of that conversation, is that sound?
That would be great. And is that study going to be publicly available or is it kind of in-house?
I, it should be, what do you, what Laura would know for sure, right? You think Laura, you know, the study they're doing on the, I think it'll be just like any other, uh, study would be public.
Absolutely.
It will be attached to the agenda, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you happen to know Laura, do you remember when, I just don't remember when they said, um, that study might be, you know, coming back.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
The audit and we have a lot of studies going on. We've got the municipal broadband, so I think, I don't know the, the, so we'll find, that's the first thing to do is find out the timeframe for the study and then get back to you all.
Great, and, um, Fred, uh, one other just little tidbit here is that Fred Bedal, who, uh, is an organic berry farmer in the ma- in, in the, um, meadows, he had two acres completely underwater for five days. Um, and he, but he did get a Grin spoon grant, um, that is really helping with, um, recovering financially from that loss. So I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the Grin spoon foundation and, um, and report what he told me. He couldn't be here tonight because he's, he's selling, um, flowers. It's, it's the hours for his farm right now, but he wanted to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seriously, thank you for everyone who was able to attend and the people who were here in spirit as well.
And for the work.
What you guys do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much, um, and, uh, I hope to talk to you all soon.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening.
Bye.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that was a nice discussion. It was quick, brisk.
Say that for farmers, they get right to the point.
Yeah, I love it. I really do. As a person who works a lot, I like it. Um, so there are no items referred to committee. Um, I don't have any new businesses. Does anyone have any new business to bring up? That leaves us at our.
Move to a chair.
Move second.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Um, Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.